Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you would all take your seats, please. The hour now being seven o'clock. I will call this special town meeting of the town of West Bridgewater to order and ask that everyone rise in pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would ask that if you have a cellphone that you would please turn it off or put it on silent mode. For those of you new to this space, restrooms are out the door. You came in directly across the hallway. Welcome to all voters and guests to this meeting. We want to especially thank everyone who's worked to make this meeting come together, everyone in the selectmen's office, the town clerk's office, the school department, and most importantly, thank you to you, the voters, for being here. A couple of simple rules. Anyone wishing to speak must approach a microphone and wait to be acknowledged by the moderator. Once acknowledged, please state your name and address and direct all conversation to the moderator. And please do not show any outward signs of emotion such as applause. At this time, I would like to ask our town clerk, Anai Anatelli, to swear in our tellers for this evening. If they would come forward to the front of the stage. They are Joan McAndrew, Warren Turner, and David Lacy. At this time, I will also ask the town clerk to certify the posting of the warrant.
I want to say that the warrant has been posted and that it was posted in 15 different places around town to call us here tonight to vote at this special meeting on March, I mean, February 25th at 7:00 PM here at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School. And that Bruce Holmquist was the constable who posted those warrants.
Thank you. When you approach a microphone, just so you know where they are, there is one microphone right here in front and there is one right in the cross aisle in the center as well. Just one more note. This evening's three articles. Each will require a two-thirds vote. As one is a borrowing article, one is the accepting of a gift of land, and the other, the potential purchase of a piece of land. We're ready to begin, and I would call on Ms. Sue Sullivan from the school committee to present Article One.
Good evening. Moved that the town of West Bridgewater appropriate the amount $1,339,458 for the purpose of paying costs for the roof replacement project at the Spring Street Elementary School at Two Spring Street, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town of West Bridgewater may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the superintendent of the West Bridgewater Public Schools. To meet this appropriation, the town treasurer under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow set amount under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of West Bridgewater acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project costs the town of West Bridgewater incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of West Bridgewater. Provided further that any grant that the town of West Bridgewater may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the less of 1.52, excuse me, 52.69% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or 2, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of West Bridgewater and the MSBA.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you like to address the motion?
I would like to just add a few most recent event points. So during the past few winter months, we've had more leaks than ever over at the Spring Street School. Just last week, for example, rain and melted snow leaked into an office which ended up soaking the phone system network for the entire school. Over this winter break, just this past winter break, there was a major leak in the preschool bathroom and many other classrooms. Fortunately, the students were not in school. The MSBA does not allow concurrent projects in the same district. So when we started with the Roseell McDonald Roof in 2008, now we have, then we have the new middle senior high school in 2010. And now it's our position that it's the Spring Street School's turn.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Unanimously to recommend.
There you are.
Thank you.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Any questions or comments from the voters? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Yes, sir?
Hi, Vic Palmary, E Street. Wasn't there a guarantee on that roof? And does anyone know when it was installed?
The existing roof?
Yeah, yeah.
From the information I have and the gentlemen that did the survey are present here in the last aisle with me. The information I have is the roof was originally in the 1950s and the building was original in the 1950s. Has the roof been replaced in the 1990s? Is that correct, from what I read? Okay. But the status of the roof, to my knowledge, is that there is no warranty at this time that we're aware of. Any other question?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Again, a two-thirds vote is required. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. Article Two. Hugh Hurley.
Mr. Moderator. Moved that the town accept the donation of a parcel of land located on C.S. Street, designated on Town Assessor's Map 19 as Lot 9, consisting of approximately 166,904 square feet and described on the warrant, to be conveyed to the town as a gift for no consideration, subject to a conveyance of a good marketable title.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Finance Committee?
We voted unanimously to recommend the article.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Hurley, would you like to speak to the motion?
If I may. This is the last house on C.S. Street just before you entered the water department property. It's the house on the left-hand side. This particular site is over five acres of land. It has a water main. Actually, it's a main coming from our wells heading up to the tanks on North Elm Street. And it also has, DEP requires that we have a 400-foot restricted area around our wells. Normally, it's, we own the property. But in this case, the well was too close to the property line. So we just have a restriction, a deed, like an easement restriction on it. When they decided to, the White family, to sell this, they had a developer, potential developer, come into the property. And he was doing some digging around. And in fact, he broke the water main. Luckily, our crews were nearby and they were very quickly able to shut it off and, and in fact, fix it. But, so now somebody is coming in. They're just looking to get one parcel, one house lot out of this, whereas before, the person were looking for three or four. And this land is actually surplus land for what he needed because he was able to get his one additional house lot out of it. So he offered to convey it to the town because he'd rather convey it, get rid of it, rather than have the liability of knowing that it's a water main on there and it's a restriction and something could happen. And of course, because now we can post it. Before, it's hard to police something when it's actually somebody else's property, even though we do have restrictions on it. But this way, we will own the land where the water main is located as well as the 400-foot restriction. So we will, we will actually have ownership of it. And we're getting it for, for no cost, which is, you know, you can't beat the price when it's no cost.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the voters? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Again, a two-thirds vote is required as it's a gift of land. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. It is unanimous. At this time, I will turn the chair over to our town clerk, Anai Anatelli, as I will as chairman of the Historic Commission be presenting Article Three.
Article Three, Mr. Benson?
Madam Moderator. The town transfer from free cash a sum of $120,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to purchase a parcel of land consisting of 30,000 square feet in the northwest corner of Lot 62, shown on Assessor's Map 46, with frontage on South Street and to pay for associated costs.
Do I hear a second? It's been seconded. Fitcom's recommendation?
Fitcom voted to recommend this article with a majority vote of five to three.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends two to one.
Do you like to speak to the motion, Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. This came to the Historic Commission pretty much at the last minute before the warrant was closing. First, the feeling is that any parcel of chapter land being offered to the town come before you, the people of the town, to make the decision and not left to a select few individuals and committees to make that determination. The Historic Commission feels that this is an important piece of land to the town because of its close proximity to the town's oldest graveyard. Visioning ahead, we know in the past, and I believe it's still true, that the work on the town park, as it continues, is at some point going to include kiosks that will give a history of the park and the town and the people involved. And this graveyard contains the remains of several people very important to the town park, Reverend James Keith, Deacon Samuel Edson, and John Ames, as well as others, including John Reed, Minister of the First Church, as well as a member of the U.S. House of Representatives in the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth U.S. Congresses, as well as several Revolutionary and War of 1812 veterans. A vision for this parcel could be that linking it to the park would be drawn to go there. Any of you familiar with the location? It's in the Sharp Curve on South Street. There is limited access to it only because there is no place to get a vehicle off the road. This 30,000 square feet could accommodate a small packing area, could also accommodate more historic kiosks and tell more of the story associating some of our valuable historic assets in the town. Thank you.
Do I have any questions? Down to the mic.
William Gibson, 124 Bryant Street. I was at the meeting with the selectmen. I am here to represent my mother, who is the owner of this property. And a couple of things happened there that I was, after thinking about it, having a hard time wrapping my head around. First off, you say $120,000. Well, that does not include any improvement. If you make this into a parking lot, now, this is just a gravel parking lot. I've done some research here. Surveying a lot of $1,000, stumping tree removal, $1,500, topsoil removal and regrade of site, $3,000, truck-in gravel for a parking lot, about $5,000, grade and roll gravel, about $3,000. You're looking at another additional $13,500. That does not include the adenrum on this piece of a chain-linked fence, six foot high, around the property. I didn't go into anybody that sells chain-linked fence. I went online. And professional installation is running about $5 to $15 a foot. So being fair, I should say $8.99 a foot. You're looking at an additional $5,000. So you've got $100,000 for the property, $4,536.50 for closing costs, legal fees and such, to repurpose the property into a small parking lot. Now, that parking lot is based on a 25-by-65-foot road and a 45-by-100-foot lot for parking. Now, this lot you're attempting to purchase is 150 feet wide and 200 feet, 200 feet deep. All right, back to our math. That comes out to $1,108, yeah, $1,117.17. For square footage, 30,000 square feet, you're looking at $3.97 a square foot. That's a cost per acre, 1,007, yeah, $171,505.05 per acre. Now, if we add in the chain-linked fence, you're now looking at $178,568.41. Now, we have an historical cemetery. I'm sure you people have driven around and seen historical cemeteries, both here in West Bridgewater and other sites. How many times have you seen vehicles parked there or even people in there other than maybe what we have and a problem here in town with vandalism? If you go by this current cemetery...
He's coming to fix it.
For an Historic Commission to recommend this is most unwise. Not even, I have yet or even seen any other Historic Commission encourage such visitation anywhere. I don't care if you go to Egypt or here in the United States, anywhere. Unsupervised visitation. It only leads to more damage. Not only that, you're also encouraging, the land is currently under lease to a farmer. I'm sure he would appreciate the ability to have people come in, that when the corn comes in, to be able to park off the road and be able to walk in and pick, rather than drawing the attention when they do park on the road, that something might be amiss. I ask you, take a long, hard look at this, people. Do we really need a parking lot in the middle of a residential area for something that is this fragile, if it's this historic, that should be preserved in other means? I've lived there for most of my life, and I can count on one hand how many times I've seen people in there visiting. Usually, it's a fleeting moment of people doing research and then they're out. You might get an occasional headstone person in there for rubbings. But the most of the time, the parking there is for local people and they're there to park and go party at a house in the neighborhood. We really do not need a parking lot. There are other ways to spend this money if you're that intent on spending money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Dave Gagny? You want to go first, Eldon? Go ahead.
Well, I brought it again. Originally, we talked it over on the Board of Selectmen. And of course, I think these similar articles, I think all of them should come before the people to make the final decision. But as I looked at it more, and tonight, we had a little meeting before the thing. We had another $10,000. And of course, in the original article, it says to pay for associated costs. I didn't have all the costs. I, you know, like to, you know, preserve our historical thing and mention the parking lot. The Board of Selectmen, we've heard about a parking lot, but we haven't actually been approaching a parking lot. But this is going to have to be maintained by a highway or other historical, more money has to be spent. And I don't think, and another thing is too, we're going to pay for it in cash. Usually, something like this usually shows up at an annual town meeting where the whole town is here and they can make a decision. But due to the, the Mr. Gibsons, they want to, you know, well, I think the original thing is to do something on the lot there. So we did have it at the town meeting. But town meetings of nature like that, you know, schools shouldn't be, you know, it should be unforeseen circumstances and not this where, you know, special parties can just come in and just load the town meeting and get what they want. I mean, I've been here for a long time and I see what, how this thing works. But I just don't feel, right now, the town making investment. On that same property, on the annual town meeting, there was a piece of property that was turned down by, by the annual town meeting, okay? And now there's a beautiful house on it. This town needs tax revenue to pay its bills. We still got a lot of things to do. We got, we got a football field and everything else. I just think at this time that we shouldn't be spending the money and that this is going to require cash to do this. I just, I just don't see it. And I'm going to get you.
David Gagny?
I just want to offer clarification of why it's $120,000 that's in the motion. The purchase price is $100,000. By state law, the Gibsons, which is the seller, has reached an agreement with the buyer for $100,000 plus all fees, plus all legal fees, plus also the installation of a chain-linked fence. So after doing all of those numbers, it comes in at just under $120,000. I made it 120 because obviously, as anyone who's ever put a fence in knows, if you enter, if you hit a couple of areas, it may cost you a few extra dollars. The closing fees for the attorney might be a little bit higher than he's projecting. So to be safely used, 120. The fee, this has nothing to do with what future expenses would be. This is just for the purchase of the actual property.
Meredith Anderson?
Meredith Anderson, 118 South Elm Street. And the reason that I personally voted for this, I think back to the original strategic plan that was set up for the town, I believe in 2001 or thereabouts. The taxpayers and residents had made a stand that they wanted open space preserved. When you think back to why you moved to West Bridgewater, why you loved to live in West Bridgewater was because of the farmland and the open space. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that before you take your vote.
I think Mr. Kruger was waiting.
Rick Kruger, 259 Spring Street. I look at it completely different. I've run a lot of projects building in town. And when you're involved with the town and you're starting to build something, everything's prevailing wage. So if you're coming out with a figure it's going to cost $50,000 for somebody to build a parking lot, it's going to be $150 for a town. Because the minimum dollars per hour is about $45 an hour for a guy that just started in the union. So the cost is going to be astronomical for that type of parking lot. The other thing is, where that cemetery is, I grew up on Cross Street. My best friend lived on Cross Street. And my whole life, I think I've only seen a couple people over there with crayons or chalk rubbing the stones and probably two or three times in my whole life. I don't think we need a whole parking lot, you know, for two or three visits a year. And if you put a parking lot in there, that bend in that road, I can't imagine the way they come down around that corner, if somebody pulls out of that parking lot, they're going to get creamed because you can't see. If you, if you step off from that cemetery, you've got to really be careful. That's a real bad bend in the road. That would be a nightmare to put a parking lot there. So, and every time that we, if we buy that for 100-something thousand, when they could build a house there and the taxes are going to probably be $10,000 a year, every 10 years, we're buying the lot again. I think we need the money. We need the cash. We don't need another little piece of land. They just built a beautiful house up there and it's going to pay big taxes.
Mr. Benson?
Madam Moderator, a couple things. First of all, we are not here tonight proposing a parking lot. We said that is a vision of something that could be there. It could be something totally different. Once the lot, if the town doesn't buy it, is sold and a house is built on it, it's gone forever. Second, as I mentioned to the Finance Committee the other night at their meeting, I believe that if you take that and put a house on that lot, yes, you're going to generate tax revenue. And if we want to use Mr. Kruger's figure of $10,000, if the people buying it have two children that they're educating in the West Bridgewater school system at over $5,000 a year cost to the town for the foreseeable future, that piece of property is revenue neutral. It's not generating anything above and beyond what it's actually consuming. So again, also to point to Mr. Marrera's comment, buying chapter land or acting on chapter land is probably almost... chapter land is probably almost always going to be at a special town meeting, because under the law, you have only so many days to respond. And I believe it's 120 days from when you're notified. You will almost never fall within the constraints of an annual town meeting. Thank you.
Steve McCarthy, 16 Halworth Drive, Chairman, Board of Assessors. I don't know a lot of the exact particulars about the case here, just from what I heard and a little research. I guess there's going to be a buffer between the proposed lot and the actual cemetery. My train of thought is with Selectman Marrera, that the, when you look at something like this, where the cemetery obviously has historical significance, is a parking lot really warranted, you know, for that facility? Understanding that down the road, it might be, it might lead into some, you know, more town land and such. I just don't see it as a good spending chip of the town money. The, I've looked at the land sales, the current sales last couple of years and the current offerings, and surely, the $100,000, you know, before the add-on prices is doable. I just don't see the project, you know, really, really, in my opinion, necessary. If it was going to be in a commercial zone, where they were proposing a car wash or a 16-unit apartment building, it'd be altogether different. He ain't talking about possibly another single-family home, you know, nicely built, fit into the area, and generating tax dollars for the town. So, in my opinion, I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Hi, Denise Harvey-Venskus, 18 Cornerstone Lane. I guess my opinion's a lot different than a lot of other people's here, because I think that it would be a wise choice. I think that probably, you don't see people there maybe once or twice every five years, because I lived on South Street for many years, and you're right, the cars do fly down there. Have I been interested in stopping there? Absolutely. Would I love to bring my Cub Scouts there and teach them the historic of our city? Absolutely. But it's not safe to walk along that road. If you were to turn in and have someplace to park, or even if it's not even a parking lot, just to get off the road, I think that that would be an excellent opportunity. And I think that a lot of the things that everybody's looking at that are going to cost this and cost that, it's costing us our environment. It's costing us our school systems. It's costing us, you know, we're taking little pieces away from our community, a little at a time. And if you look at this one spot that has this historic significance, you know, to know that these people who are, you know, founding fathers or whatever to our country, and to have such significance, and not have it accessible to people simply because it's on a very fast road, which it shouldn't be, that fast, but we all know it's a cut through, there's a lot there. And we keep whittling away at our community, putting houses in, and taking away from what everybody else said, the open space, and, you know, there's been so many proposals up, so, so much lately about they want land for this, and they want land for that, and we're not purchasing any of it. Well, pretty soon, we're going to be not a small community. We are going to be not a town anymore. We'll be, you know, packed in with all kinds of houses everywhere, and we won't have what we have now. And I think by taking parcel by parcel and just letting it slide by, we are going to lose significant characteristics to our town. I think we should vote for it. I think that there's, I know there's a lot of focus on money and how people do things, but it's not all about the dollar. It's not all about the dollar. It is about where we live. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Scott Ames, 4 Stonecroft Farm Lane. I've been on Stonecroft for 12 years, but I lived on South Street for 34 years, and my ancestors are actually buried in that cemetery. Thomas Ames, 1776. I am not for this project. That cemetery is actually very well documented in the old history of West Bridgewater, with each stone being documented in a map. And it's much better documented than the other old cemeteries in West Bridgewater, like on Manly Street and the Powderhouse Cemetery. We are, we don't have parking lots for those cemeteries. I don't think it is going to detract from the cemetery if we don't have a parking lot. I don't think it's really needed. That cemetery has existed for over 300 years, and with or without a parking lot, I don't think it's a needed expenditure of money. I remember driving up there many times myself to do research in that cemetery, and I never had a problem parking on the berm of South Street when I went into that cemetery. And I agree with the gentleman behind me. Generally, you see someone in that cemetery only a couple, few times a year. That cemetery is very well documented, as opposed to many of the other cemeteries in West Bridgewater. I cannot see this as a necessary expenditure of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson.
In answer to the question about open space, Chapter 61A was designed to help the farmer keep their land in open space. This property is in open space. This is not a decision that my mother takes lightly. She would prefer not to sell, but finances have dictated otherwise. Now, there are several alternatives that she could have followed. She could have very easily dropped this out of 61A. After it lapses after two years, the town then does not have the option to buy. The other alternative is to entertain the option from Cumberland Farms, Haciotis. They can afford to keep it out of 61A. The town seems very pleased that they can develop up on South Elm Street, and I'm sure Mr. Haciotis would enjoy having 25 acres added to his current 39 acres next door to make another development. We do not want to see that. Unfortunately, the only asset that my mother has is these three house lots, to keep the rest of it in open space. Please consider this.
Arthur Cabral, 77 Walnut Street. Just to a couple of points. One, Mr. Benson said, family moves into that single-family house, has a couple of kids, we educate them. It's revenue neutral. The town buys it, whatever we do with it, it's not revenue neutral. As Mr. Marrera said earlier, we have to maintain it. We have to pay to do whatever work is necessary, whether it's a parking lot, kiosks, whatever gets done there. It's not just what we're buying now, it's a cost to the town. People who are worried about loss of farmland or the impact on the school, this is a single-family house lot. It's not really farmland. It's going to put a couple kids in the school. If you want to be concerned about open space, you want to be concerned about the schools, take this money, if we don't need it for something else, put it aside and use it to buy 29 acres of farmland. Other big pieces of land, so that you don't have things like 120 units here, 50 units there, that are going to really cause a big impact to the town. I mean, if money was no object, great. Buy up every lot, put it all together. But until we have enough affordable housing that we don't have to worry about 40B, and until we have enough money in our pockets that we can pick up other available land, I don't think we should be spending the town money to buy a single-house lot.
Okay, so, we have no more, no more questions. We'll call for the vote. This requires a two-thirds vote, because it is a land purchase. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I think I have to call for the tellers. Tellers, come up. All those in favor, please raise your cards up and hold them up till the counters get done. Tellers, are we all set? Okay, so now, put your cards down, and those who are opposed, put your cards up, please, and hold them up until you're done. Okay, so we had a total of 72 voters. We had 24 yeses and 48 nos. You needed 48 yeses to pass, so the motion is defeated.
Thank you, Annie, for moderating that question. There being no other business to come before this meeting, I will call for a motion to dissolve. Moved, is there a second? All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. This meeting is dissolved. Thank you.